Okay, good evening, good evening Mahopec community. Welcome to our special board, board session for September 10th, 2020. I know we're, we're a couple of days into, into the school year now and you know, I'm, I'm hopeful that everybody is, is seeing the fruits of the, of the amount of labor that went into the reopening plan and you know, my hope is that we continue the momentum and but more importantly that we're, we know there are going to be challenges, but we know that we have to also adapt. It's just like, just like being a, being a football coach and a football team, you know, when they throw different defenses at you, you have to learn how to adjust and I know we will. With that, I would like to turn the meeting over right now. Our illustrious superintendent of schools, a very busy Mr. Anthony DiCarlo for his superintendent report. Anthony?
Thank you, President Mangan, very much appreciated. And to the board trustees, thank you for allowing us to share updates every week with you. I think it's vitally important. So as you mentioned, President Mangan, we started our virtual remote learning half days on Wednesday, today and tomorrow. And again, I want to thank the public for their patience and the reasoning for doing that was for allow us our teachers to really be able to gain some real professional learning, surrounded around supporting them in that remote learning, you know, looking at certain specific strands within, you know, student engagement, social emotional learning, best practices, and looking at it with our mid team and having our mid team under the leadership of, of Assistant Superintendent Mike Trombley, Assistant Superintendent Dr. Stowell really did a great job putting together a variety of chalkboard sessions that modeled for teachers to replicate really what the learning would look like and how they could be able to incorporate that to make those real world connections with our, our students. And I think, you know, we saw a lot of that happening. We saw the kids interacting with students. We've got a lot of positive feedback, President Mangan and trustees from parents noticing that difference. So that's a very important part. In a couple of seconds, I'll turn it over to Dr. Stowell. We'll talk a little bit about the transitioning with our, our special education students. And with that being said, and I, and I know the board is very supportive of this and so is the community. This is going to be something that's going on all year. You know, we're going to be taking opportunities over the school year to continue with our professional learning. So there may be some days over the course of each month that, you know, we go remote so our teachers can continue some of that professional learning. And we'll, we'll be updating you through the course of the year with that. During the course of this week, I believe it was Wednesday, I had a, a meeting with Tom McMahon, the president of the MTA. We had a very, very good conversation. It is both his goal and my goal to try to get students in as soon as possible. Deborah Legato will tell you a little bit about where we are and, and some of that. And what we're hoping to do is that, you know, within the next maybe week to week and a half, if everything's going well and we have everything in place, actually having our students hopefully come back before October 2nd. And that may be in a staggered approach. We're looking at that because we want to be able to get our students in as soon as possible. But we're really looking to see if we can get our younger students in, you know, the most, because they're the most important to get them into the school building. And so we're working on that. We've listened to parents and the parents have been honest and they've said, you know, Mr. DiCarlo, listen, you know, we understand there may be days and we're forgetting this, right? We're talking about the, the, you know, COVID, but people get sick and things happen. And you know, a number of parents said, Mr. DiCarlo, like we understand if there's days where our kids don't have their teacher because they're sick, you know, and, and maybe putting a group of classes together, you know, in an auditorium or in a, in a gym or in a cafeteria with their Chromebooks learning, you know, we're okay with that. We'd rather the kids be in and be doing that than, you know, having to learn remotely. So, you know, we're getting some really good feedback. We're working very, very hard and, and we're hopefully, hopefully going to be very optimistic about trying to get the kids in even sooner than we thought to be able to do that. With that being said, I want to share with you that we are still very frustrated as a group of superintendents. And I've been mentioning this and it's really important. We have begged the governor's office and the Department of Health to really give us clear guidance on what symptom or symptoms are related to COVID and what that impact has on both sending students home as well as sending teachers home. Because as we know, everybody, many of us have allergies. We get a sniffle, we get a cough. That doesn't necessarily mean that we have COVID. And under the current guidance, we'd be sending teachers and students home in droves every day. And therefore taking away from what we want to do is getting back to school. And we're asking the state to really clarify what that actually means. Because right now, a cold or a sniffle, you go to the nurse, the nurse then has to send you and call your parent up and send you to your doctor. Your doctor then has to look at you and in most cases, they're struggling with the two because then you have to have a COVID test. We're talking about then, you know, how long the tests are taking before you can come back. It's a very, very complicated cycle. And we're really hoping between now and the time that we do open up, that we have that better guidance. Because right now it's very difficult and I, the, the community needs to understand that. It's once again, what I've been telling you about all the time is that all of this stuff needs to be much clearer so that expectations apply to all and we know exactly what needs to be done. And that's really important. And I give another example and, and I've said this throughout the summer. I really in my heart of hearts, I'm listening to some other superintendents and the, and the, and some guidance around the country. Follow the science. If you follow the science and we wear our masks and we socially distance and we make our staff and our kids wash their hands, sneeze into their, you know, into their elbows, we should be okay. What you're seeing happening is a lot of schools are not able to open because stuff that's happening outside of school. You saw that over the last couple of weeks with the SUNY schools closing because of parties and stuff that went on. Pelham High School, the day before they're supposed to open, there are 150 kids out in the woods partying. Now they have to shut down. And so it is so important, we're all working hard, but it really is important to, to understand that. We want to make sure that we're following the science and doing those right things so that we can open up and we can get our kids in school. That's a really important aspect of what we're trying to do. I'm now going to turn it over to our Assistant Superintendent for instruction, Michael Trombley. He'll tell you a little bit about the overview of what's happened over the first couple of days, the work that he's done, some of the observations that have been shared with him by teachers as well as our, our principals. And then from Mike, we'll go to.
Anthony, you lost your sound. Anthony?
Mike, I think he was turning it over to you.
So, well, Mr. DiCarlo works, works on his audio. Good evening, members of the Board of Education and any community members listening in. Just wanted to update you on some of the fantastic work, the dedicated efforts of our teachers and our entire staff or administrators to really help support a transition back into a new paradigm of the classroom. And that's really what it is. This is a new paradigm that I've said it going back to March, that most of our teachers have never been trained to teach in. Most of our students have never been trained to learn in. Most of our parents don't, don't have any idea right away on how to support a new classroom environment learning from home. So it's a fantastic work. I often refer to Mayapec Educational Community. We are an entire community supporting our students in their academic efforts during this challenging time. Towards the later part of August, we met with a few of our instructional coaches, our clinicians and some of our safety, health and safety staff. And we talked about what are the key areas that our teachers need to have an understanding of as they transition back in. And it focused on their physical health and wellness, their mental health and wellness and also how to teach in this new instructional paradigm. And not only the health and wellness of our staff, but also the health and wellness of our students. So over the course of two days and then leading right up into our first instructional day, a superintendent's conference day, we had teachers develop within frameworks that our administrators set self, professional learning opportunities for our staff to center around those key areas of physical health and wellness for staff and students, mental health and wellness of our, of our staff and students and the new instructional paradigm. And I have to say, as they always do, our instructional coaches, our clinicians, our teachers who facilitate these professional learning opportunities thoroughly impressed me, exceeded my expectations and provided a number of professional learning opportunities for their, for our teachers to begin to feel comfortable, to begin to make that next step into how they can, can transition into this, this instructional model. So we had over seven hours of professional learning consisting of time on September 2nd, September 3rd and then September 8th. In between those seven hours, we also afforded teachers time to put into practice what they had learned. So they would select from a, a menu of options that might be applicable to where they felt a need to engage in professional learning. And then right after that, they had time to work with either on themselves, reflect or work with colleagues on how to implement or how to upgrade, enhance or adjust their classroom instruction based upon what they learned. We also covered some mandated trainings in terms of health and safety procedures. We also prepared teachers to how they might be able to teach their students these new health and safety procedures. So a fantastic job done by all. Our instructional coaches again led those, those professional development sessions, our clinicians and our nursing and our health and safety staff. So our teachers learn from their colleagues and I want to thank them again for all of their efforts. That led into the first day of welcoming, the most important day, welcoming some of our students back into our schools occurring on the, the 9th. And I walked, I had a chance to, to join the middle school for their welcome or for their opening day. And what I saw were eye smiles, as we say now underneath masks of students coming back, of teachers welcoming them back, of, of the whole purpose of why we are here, to have students in the building. Really put into perspective all the hard work that everybody is engaged in and that was the most important thing. Was able to walk the classrooms, particularly at the high school, an opening day in Foma Road. When we had instruction going on, as you know, we had compressed schedules for half day, early release. And I'll go back, in the morning is when we allowed our, is when we had those teacher-directed and self-chosen professional learning sessions. In the afternoon, we wanted to give time to our buildings to have opportunities to work with their staff on building-specific opportunities such as reviewing protocols, buttoning up loose ends to make sure we can welcome students back. So as you know, the 9th and the 10th, and then tomorrow, we will have compressed schedules to, to have remote learning in the, in the morning and then also time for building-based activities or professional learnings in the afternoon. And the purpose of this again is to ensure that our protocols, our procedures that we have spent time planning actually makes sense when we have students coming back into the classroom. So there will be adjustments made. Any plan that you have, you should make adjustments based upon what you see. And that's the purpose of these main three days. So, so thank you again to all those who are supporting that. As I walked the hallways of various buildings over the past few days, I saw teachers holding meets. I heard students interacting with teachers. I heard teachers laying out expectations, engaged in activities where we're looking on building relationships in this new paradigm. So again, very impressed with the work that our teachers are doing and our students now that they're back in to, to make this instructional shift. Just want to give you an update on, on student learning preferences. Currently at this time, we have, and this is current as of November 6th, I'm sorry, November, I apologize, September 6th. Don't mean to move forward through these three months. We currently have 3,143 students engaged in the hybrid learning, choosing the hybrid learning model. And we have 573 students choosing the remote learning model, modality. That equates to 84, 84.58% of our students and families have chosen the hybrid learning model when we, when we transition back to that. And 15.42% students choosing the remote learning model. We also have over 25 students in some point of our homeschool request process. And as you know, we as a district partner with parents to facilitate the homeschooling program where we don't necessarily provide the material support, but we provide support to make sure that our, our families who choose to homeschool are, are following the regulations laid out by the New York State Department of Education. At this time, I'll yield any questions, comments from the members of the board.
Thank you, Mike. I'll turn it over to Dr. Stowell.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DiCarlo. I'm sorry, members of the board, this is one of those times where you adapt, you overcome. Internet is down in my town, so I'm sitting in a parking lot trying to remote in using cellular. So if I break up or you don't hear me, just please let me know. And I'm not using my video to save bandwidth. So this is kind of our new normal, so this is almost apropos. Luckily, I'll talk a little bit about technology and, and let you know that the technology in our district is better than I'm experiencing in my home. So I think that's a good thing. I'll let you know that in terms of technology and connectivity, we've been looking at our bandwidth. We've been looking at our network. We have a gig of bandwidth capability and on September 2nd, when everybody was streaming video, we did not reach our apex. We were at about a little under 900 megabits, which means that our calculations were correct and we were able to, you weren't able to handle the bandwidth we expect when we have students in, in a hybrid model. Cause not everybody does it at the same time. We did have some hiccups along the way, many of which were due to in the last couple of days, Google, Google having hiccups with meets, Google having hiccups with their drive. We communicated that with staff. This is, this is the world trying to do school and work digitally. And so those are the things that are going to happen. And as Mr. Trombley said, I have to hand it to our teachers. They rolled with it, they adapted, they did fantastic work with that. As I, as I mentioned earlier, we, we continuously looking at our network and activity. We are rolling through many tech requests from families. We are finding that this may be the first time some of our students have turned on their Chromebook in a while. We're rolling through tech requests in, in full transparency. We have pretty much sent out all of the devices in the district. So our spares at this point are loner devices that have been in the past. You know, we're, we're a little short. We're waiting for about 300 devices to come back from being repaired. We're waiting for a big shipment at the end of this month for our refresh cycle, about 800 devices. So we should be good. We're good right now. I, I have to hand it to our technology team. They have been working around the clock, getting devices in people's hands, new kids coming into the district, troubleshooting small little issues. And, and when we look at the data in terms of tech request tickets that came in at the beginning of school, that always happens. But I'll give you one example. You know, we have over 300 interactive whiteboards or smart boards or true touch devices in our district. We test all of those things. We had 10 issues that came in the first day. That's not a lot and out of those 10 issues, some of them were not necessarily a technology issue, but a user issue. Like, like an eraser pushed between two, two connecting cords. Or by accident, a power cord just fell out of the bottom of the, the smart board. So we were able to fix those things really quickly. We know how important it is to our teachers and I have to say, our teachers have been fantastic at being very, very, very understanding at the speed in which we're trying to, to adapt here. So again, I appreciate the board's support in our technology infrastructure plan. It's really paying dividends now. Please know though, and I did send out to our staff and our families, please know that, that, you know, if there's an issue with someone's technology, it's not instantaneous. If we have a new student coming in, they're not going to get a Chromebook the same day. We have to onboard them, we have to put them in our system, we have to, we have to procure a device from our, from our stockpile. Then we have to actually provision it for that particular student so that they can use it. So we're looking at a 24 to 48 hour turnaround for new students entering the district and we've had quite a few. In terms of first days of school, I have to really tip my hat to the teaching assistants, the aides, the special ed teachers who've welcomed, and our bus driver, she's done a fantastic job of getting these kids to school. So for the past two days, we've had our students with the most significant needs, who have full-time special education, sports and services come into our, our building. As, as Mike said, eye smiles under masks, our kids have done exceptionally well. Our parents have been exceptionally patient with getting our students in. And our teachers have been phenomenal at trying to create some normalcy for our students that need in-person services the most. So all in all, I know they're all exhausted, our families are probably exhausted. But the in-person services for a small percent of our students with disabilities has gone really, really well. And for our students who have IEPs, who have been engaged in half-days of remote services, I have to tip my hat to our special ed teachers who have been reaching out to those students, providing support in the half-days. And, and please know that these half-days are really to get kids comfortable, to reconnect, to establish a social emotional connection so that students are ready to learn and teachers are ready to teach. So I would say, you know, given everything, I have to hand it to our, our technology staff, our special ed and PPS staff, our parents, our bus drivers have done a remarkable job and our principals who have really, you know, been able to on the fly make adjustments. That's what these days are about, understanding what the new paradigm is, making on the fly adjustments, making it better each day. Day two was better than day one. And I'm sure when our students with disabilities start, you know, in our, for in-person learning for full days on the 14th, it'll be better. So I appreciate the time. I apologize for no video, but in these times, we just do what we need to do to get the job done.
Thank you, Greg. And I just want to echo what Greg said. You know, sometimes when you're involved as a group inside, you don't sometimes think and you beat yourselves up all the time. Carol Rapore Summer, who is well-known throughout Westchester County as one of the top special educators. And we were very fortunate to get her to come in as a replacement for Megan Phoebe. She made a comment to the administrator's team two days ago. And she said, you know, Anthony, I've been in a lot of school districts. She said, the way that this district opened up, as, as Greg said, everybody, teachers, custodians, transportation. She said it was seamless. She says, and that does not happen in a lot of places. And I said to her, Carol, thank you for sharing because sometimes when you're in it, you're your worst critic. And when you have somebody from an outside come in and say, listen, you guys are doing a real good job, don't beat yourselves up. And I echo what Greg said and, and she really put a really good perspective on, we are working hard and sometimes pat yourself on the back for doing that. So Greg, very well said. Before I turn it over to Deborah Legato, you know, there's, and Greg mentioned it and Mike mentioned it and President Mangan mentioned it. We have to be able to adapt and be flexible during these times. And when sometimes decisions are made, they're made for the overall good because we see sometimes pitfalls and we want to make sure those pitfalls don't happen. So I know there's some questions out there with regards to a letter that was posted on social media about us working with the MTA and allowing some flexibility over the next two weeks from, and being able to have some of the teachers be able to teach from home. The reason for that, everybody, is that we want to have continuity of instruction. We want to make sure the teachers who just welcome their kids over the last three days, continue to do the work that needs to be done. We don't want to have a sub sitting there with your students, remote learning. That doesn't make much sense. And by the way, we don't even have enough subs right now because that's what we're trying to do to be able to, if a teacher is out in the future. So the determination was to do that, to allow some teachers, if, if needed, to teach from home. The expectations are still exactly the same. The work that's been done is not going to change. Our administrators will be doing the same thing that they'd be doing if they were, you know, in school and managing and looking and seeing and getting into the virtual spaces, providing those teachers with support as needed and providing the teachers with feedback. So the, the purpose behind the next two weeks, allowing that to happen, was to make sure that we have that continuity of instruction for our kids as we try to put together in a number of ways, a programs to be creative, to get our teachers in within the next two weeks and start going with that hybrid model. So that was the reasoning behind that. And it was, I think, something that we looked at and we thought would be best for our learners K to 12. So Deborah, with that being said, I turn it over to you for an update on where we're at, some of the things that we are doing.
Hi. Good evening, how is everyone? Just to update you really quickly, a, a great majority of my time right now has been spent working through the workplace accommodation requests as well as some of the childcare leave issues. It's actually been really very good though. I've been meeting with teachers one-on-one through Google meets. I think it's been so important to listen, to work through some of their concerns and to see where we can, where we can help them feel comfortable coming back to the, the school district and to the classroom. So, you know, I can't thank you enough for allowing Dr. Casaro to work with me. I really think that as far as the workplace accommodations, it doesn't appear that too many teachers will be out of the classroom. I think we will be able to, you know, adapt to, to whatever their needs are. I think the bigger concern right now will be the childcare leaves. Folks that are in other school districts or even in our school district, where kids are remote a couple of days a week and they may not have the childcare to, to, you know, to help them out. So that, that to me right now is going to be the bigger concern. But that being said, everybody's been extremely cooperative. We are filling some of our leave replacements now because I think I said the last meeting, these are the things we're dealing with over the COVID virus, but there's the regular maternity leaves and, you know, people that have had to have emergency surgery. And so we're, we're working through those tonight on the consent agenda. You'll see we have three of our building subs will be doing some short-term leave replacements for us, starting the year out. Then they'll go back to being building subs. But as we start to identify where these holes are, whether it's two days a week or, or for, you know, a full leave or somebody taking, taking off or, or even just going out on quarantine. What we're trying to do is have a good amount of subs to be filling in, have monitors and teaching assistants for supervision. So, you know, that's really been our charge. We're going to be hiring a lot of subs and teaching assistants. Next week I'll be meeting with quite a few that will be bringing on board. And then hopefully we can fill in some of the other supervisory issues that we might be having with some monitors. So that, that's really it, but I really do thank you for Dr. Casaro. He's been extremely helpful and I think it's been very, very good to be meeting one-on-one with teachers and really just listening and, and understanding what their concerns are and trying to address them.
Thank you, Deborah. And, and also I know that, you know, Tom is working with his staff on, on some surveys he'll be sending out so that we can as a district be creative to help with some of those issues so that we can get teachers to come back and, and be a part of what needs to happen. So we're working on every specific angle possible to be able to, to do the best we can to get as many.
I think what, what Superintendent DiCarlo said is, is really spot on. We're really going to have to be flexible from day to day because we just don't know what we'll be walking into. We don't know someone who's going to wake up and have to be quarantined and, or, or stay home because they're just not feeling well. So we're going to have to be flexible, we're going to have to have staff that, that, you know, we can move around in, within a school building to cover, you know, when, when we need to have classrooms covered. So that, that will be the challenge, but flexibility is going to be like the key word this year.
Right. And that's why, Deborah, I, I started the conversation, I think the parents understand that. There may be days when groups of kids have to be put together in a large, you know, area. And we have, you know, either a permanent sub or a teacher assistant with those kids while they log on and they do what they need to do, do remotely. And I think they're, they're understanding that. That's the way the year is going to be. There's going to be ebbs and flows, there may be starts and stops, but you know, I, I'm confident we'll be able to get through this together.
Well, we are still getting requests, you know, for every two that we're solving, you know, one more comes in. But, but we're working through those. We'll keep you posted.
Thank you, Deb. And now of course, President Mangan and trustees, you're hearing about all the stuff that needs to be done. Well, that comes with the cost factor and you know, we're talking about health and safety and things that we need to purchase and buy. But yet, you know, we know that somewhere down the road, you know, we may be, be losing a substantial amount of money. So Sandra's going to kind of give you a quick update of where we're at and what we're looking at. And we'll be doing those updates again periodically so you get a clear understanding of what's happening and what's going on. And then after Ms. Colesy is done, I'll give you an update on, on the sports, interest class to court sports and what's happening in sector one and the state. Sandra, over to you.
Good evening, everyone. So I was looking at things in a, in a global sense for the financial piece as we attempt to learn more information or hoped for a federal bailout. We really need everyone who's listening to this to reach out to your representatives. We really need everyone who's listening to this to reach out to your representatives and fight for the state aid that we need, whether it's state or it's federal bailout, the districts and all districts need this, the students need this. It's been very quiet, talking with some of my counterparts, everybody is asking the question, is anybody paying attention to this? Because it's significant for us. So on a global sense, our budget is $125 million. We may lose $7 million worth of our projected aid, bringing us down to $117 million. Right now, our budgeted salaries and benefits will come to approximately $100 million. If you factor in your BOSI's costs, budgeted is $9.5 million. That brings us to $119.5 million, and our projected revenue without any changes is now $117 million. That does not include anything like supplies that we need. What if we need additional staff? We're talking about that due to COVID. There are, you know, more supplies needed for things such as PPE. All of those things are not factored, we're not factored in to our original budget of how much we would actually be expending, and that cost just keeps growing as we try and make sure that we are keeping everyone safe and doing the right things and following whatever guidelines we have been presented with. So I ask all of you to please reach out, tell your friends to reach out, and, you know, make that plea to help make school districts whole. Many people ask about reducing taxes. First of all, I don't have the authority to do that, and second of all, there's no way to do that at this time. Thank you.
Mrs. Superintendent, may I just jump in for a second?
Sure, Tanner.
I think the Assistant Superintendent is exactly right about advocating to our representatives, because this is not just something we have to say, we have to do, this is something we have to do. And that means everyone watching and tell people you know in Maya PAC to write to our congressmen, write to our senators, call, email, because I know it works. I have experience working in representatives' offices, when a bunch of calls come in, a bunch of emails and letters come in, we're forced to pay attention, and that's what we have to do. We need our representatives to pay attention to Maya PAC and act for Maya PAC. So I just wanted to jump off of that, and I appreciate everything you guys are doing as well. So thank you.
Thank you. So, and just so Tanner's, to echo what Trustee Quacken's saying, it's something that I put into every single letter, probably for the last two months, you know, you can link onto that and look at that, because it's really important. And let's be honest, everybody, everybody, you know me for a very long time, this should not be political, this is about kids. Shouldn't be whether you're left or right, it's about getting money for kids to be able to meet a pandemic and get what schools need. That's a really important piece to this whole thing, at the end of the day. So it's important to do exactly what I think Tanner is saying, as well as our Assistant Superintendent for Business, Ms. Clovisi. So last night, the New York State Physical Athletic Association decided to move the following sports to Fall Season 2, that they're calling it, which will start on March 1st, that's football, volleyball, competitive cheer, and girls swim. So they will be starting March of next year. We're happy with that, because now there's some direction. I know the coaches were anxious.
Can anybody else not hear him?
Meetings, I know the portal was open for parents to start registering their students into our athletic portal to get that information in, and Section 1 will be starting girls tennis, boys cross-country, I'm sorry, soccer, boys and girls, and field hockey will be beginning on September 29th, and games will start somewhere about October 14th or 15th. The season is being extended, so it'll be longer than it usually is, most likely getting in somewhere between maybe eight to 10 games, and then depending on the sports, maybe having playoffs and moving forward from that. There are no state championships this fall, there would just be Section 1, that's up to the Champions Committee from Section 1 on what they want to do. With that being said, modified sports is on hold. Section 1 will make a determination whether there will even be modified sports for the fall. I want to clear that up. It's not for the entire year, because I know we have some students, you know, seventh and eighth graders anxious to play, they're making a determination about fall modified sports, and that you can understand. I mean, the same thing with the guidance and everything else, board members that we have to just get ready for school, now you're talking about setting up and getting varsity and JV to run efficiently. You know, there's a conversation about putting modified on top of that, whether or not that's even doable for the fall season or not, and Section 1's looking at that, and probably within the next weeks, there'll be a determination with regards to that. Some other things that are up for discussion about sports is about fans, as you know, it's just two, it's mom and dad. We're very lucky and blessed that we have local live, so that even though our students may not be able to watch their friends play, and some relatives might not be able to watch their, you know, their, you know, their, either, you know, granddaughter, grandson, niece, whatever, they can also watch it on local live. But that's the guidelines as of now, only two people, and that would be the parents of the specific student athlete. So that's where we are with sports. We're still waiting to see what the winter will look like, but we want to be able to get through the fall first. We're also going to try to do the following board members, we're going to probably, early on, do our senior nights, so we make sure we get them in, because God forbid there is some type of a tick, and then all of a sudden, we can't play, we want to honor our athletes, and so probably the first or second games, we'll have our senior nights, we'll acknowledge our seniors for those specific sports, and we'll be able to do what we have to do with their parents and do what we traditionally do in Maya PAC for what that is. President Mangan, that is our update for tonight, I turn it back over to you.
Thank you very much to Superintendent DeCarlo and all the Assistant Superintendents for their updates. They were certainly timely, we know that it's certainly a very unique time out there, and we appreciate all the efforts and the sleepless nights that are going into this, into this school year. So thank you, thank you one and all. With that, and again, the updates were terrific. With that, we've got some business that we have to do ourselves here, so what I'd like to do is if I could get a motion to open, so we can approve tonight's consent.
So moved.
Thank you, Ray, second?
Second.
Second, Lucy, Lucy and Adam, I thought it was a tie over there with the hand going up, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And now I need, I'd like to have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Ray, second, Adam, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. And with that, I believe that, I believe that we are completed for this evening, with the consent agenda being approved, our updates from our Assistant Superintendents. What we'd like to do right now is, I think this has been a very, I think these weekly updates are going to be really a wonderful opportunity to communicate with our, with our community on a regular basis. Once again, thank you to the Board of, the Board of Trustees, our Maya PAC Central School District, you know, we're out there in the community, it's difficult, you know, we're, you know, we're on the front line when it comes to a lot of things, along with, along with the Assistant Superintendents and our Superintendent of Schools, Anthony DeCarlo. Once again, please continue to watch Mr. DeCarlo's updates and his spotlights. There's a lot of information that's on our website and on our channel, please continue to review that stuff, check the website often, it's being updated constantly, so please continue to do that. And as was echoed in our past several spotlights and Superintendent updates, was to please write your, write your local representatives, and let's talk about just the funding. We've done a lot of things over here in Maho PAC over the last, you know, over the last several years, and I'd hate to, I'd hate to see us have to sit there and have to start cutting some of the things we work so hard to put in. So with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to close. Melody, are we, are we good on the tube there?
Yes, we're going to be motioning to close.
Yeah, okay, just want to, okay, so could I get a, could I get a motion to close, please?
So moved, sorry.
Thank you, Tanner, second?
Second.
Second, thanks, Adam, all in favor?
Second.
Aye.
Larry, all in favor? Aye. Thank you very much, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Yeah, thanks, Deb, thank you. Good night, everyone, thank you.
Good night. Thank you, Mike and the board for your support, very much appreciated, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
Again, thanks to Greg and Mr. Trump Blade for getting that special education program up, it's wonderful.
Oh, absolutely, Ray, absolutely. It's just the tip of the iceberg, we're going to have kids in real soon, so very excited about it.
Terrific.